All right, I would like to start the Groton Board of Education meeting. Good evening. My name is Kim Shepherdson Watson and I'm serving as the chairperson. And today is June 26th and by my clock it is 6:04 and it's my honor to start our meeting, which will be first started off with a pledge of allegiance. And Sam, would you be willing to lead me in the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Ms. Joan.
Sam, could you unmute?
Somebody has to unmute?
We are unmuted. We are muted.
We're muted.
Kim?
Can you hear me now, Ms. Joan?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Beverly, can you hear?
Yes, I can now.
Okay, thank you for alerting us. So, good evening. So we're still going on. We have done the pledge of allegiance and thank you for your patience. And also, my hat goes off to our tech crew of Caitlin and Mark. Thank you so very much for the work behind the scenes to take care of this. And Clint, you as well. Our first order of business would be comments from citizens. And Ms. Joan, do you know of anyone that's online that is interested in speaking?
I have not heard.
There is no one here in the building. Is there anyone online that wish to address the board? Hearing none, we will move on. We do not have students' representative reports. And as we get down to number item six, I am going to ask that we just change the schedule just a tad. Ken Knight is, actually, it's his birthday today. And I believe that his family would love for him to get us home as soon as possible and we would love to have that happen. And all that I ask, and Ken, I also believe that this is your last regular Board of Ed meeting with us. And so, I personally would just love to say thank you very much for your service to the district, to the service to me personally, and your shining smile and light and making numbers understandable is wonderful. And Con College has gotten someone really well and they are very lucky to have you in their service.
Thank you very much. And it's been an honor to work with everyone and go through all this. I love explaining or trying to explain some things that sometimes are difficult to understand. Sometimes I feel like I'm doing a good job, sometimes I don't, but I appreciate those very kind words.
You are.
Turn up your mic.
We're all.
I'll do that again.
One small voice from.
Is this up now?
All right, thank you.
What he said.
But the one thing, Dean, I know that you had a question, or were you just waving?
I was, I had sent, it's sometimes the case that my daughter's not here because on Monday nights she has fire training, EMS training, that kind of thing. But I just reminded her that, you know, we have a, she says, oh, is that tonight? I don't think I can make it. So just flat out, I think she's, she missed it.
That's fine.
Maybe because school's over and she wasn't thinking.
Yeah, yeah. She has a lot on her plate.
Yes, and I appreciate her, her expertise as a student on our board and we'll look forward to seeing her next time she can make it. But Ken, to, if I can be so bold to the rest of the board, is I would like to have Ken speak to one of our, I think it's number, under new business, it is number two, C2, which is the out-of-district tuitions. If you, along with Jay, could speak to that so that when we, so that you can leave and we can then have, that you can leave and we can have discussion. And Jay, I feel confident that you also, along with your staff, I mean, your committee, Dean and Bev, would be able to speak to this as well. Is that correct?
Yes, we spoke about it at finance. We also spoke about it at the last COW. So it has been thoroughly discussed.
Okay, thank you. So, Ken, you're on.
So, do you want me to start with the tuitions or do you want me to start with the object code?
Since it's your birthday and it's your last meeting, it's your birthday, you can, you can do whatever, however you would like to see fit.
Let's start with the object code summary, which is attachment number three.
Okay.
So, this is the big one because this is, we're nearing the end of the year. We've got four days left in this year and we are trying to wrap everything up. We had our final payroll last Friday and our final AP check run also last week on Wednesday. So, we're wrapping everything up. As you can tell from the attachment number three, it's, it's coming down to zero. There were no additional funds left over. We spent it. We really kind of went over in a big way under energy, electricity, our natural gas. Diesel costs were way up higher. We had anticipated them to be higher, but they went higher than what we anticipated. The rates went, went quite high and our usage didn't go down. So, so that resulted in an increased cost. Transportation is also up significantly, but we've talked about that over the past year where we added two buses at the beginning of the year. So, we did anticipate some of that. This is being offset by reductions in, in salaries and those are replacements at, at lower costs than we anticipated, especially under the teachers, as well as a reduction in the health insurance costs as we've had some very good experience and we'll see that on the next, on the next exhibit. And then there was also some, out-of-district tuition expense for special education placements was also down. So, all of that resulted in, in us coming right, right on budget.
And it was masterful, the way he's worked us through this year. I just want to commend Ken. He's been my right and left arm. I'm really going to miss him. But it was really tricky at the end when we had all these escalating costs and, you know, we budgeted a year and a half prior, or two years prior. So, it really hit us like a ton of bricks. But we really were fortunate that there were other things that were underfunded and I had held off the principals in spending all of their.
Site budgets.
Site budgets. So, we had done a few things that we were able to conscientiously work together very, at the very end. Remember seeing those $32,000 a couple of months in a row there at the end? Well, it kind of, all of a sudden, phew, when the escalating costs came in. But thank you so much for all your hard work and, and keeping me always informed.
And I, and I will say that looking forward to next year, these, these energy costs, they're, they're not going to be going down. They're, they're going up. So, it's something that we need to continue to keep an eye on. Unfortunately, when we set the budget for FY '24, we use what we thought was going to happen in '23. Well, '23 came in much higher. So, it's something we have to continue to look at and be mindful of. It's a concern.
Rita?
I was just going to say that at one time, we actually had a full week for February vacation because of the energy costs were so high. And maybe we'll have to think about bringing something like that back because we closed the schools and so, I mean, there had, we'll have to find cost savings someplace.
And I think our bigger newer schools take a lot more energy.
They do.
Even though we've shut down some of the older ones, you know. So.
Dean?
Yeah, that was going to be my, part of my question, which is to what extent is our '24 budget going to hold? Not just in fuel, I guess, but in any other items. I guess fuel's the big driver. But, because at this distance in June, it's hard to remember what the basis for the last budget was. And was it adjusted for our experiences? Is our experience in June now much different than it was in February when we can already see some changes? Yeah, I dread to see next year's because we may not have these wonderful offsets.
Right.
I had another question. I can't think of it, but I'll pass. Thanks.
Maybe that's something that the finance and facilities, probably in September, October, should really take a look at the budget and take a look at what that looks like.
Well, at least we'll know. We might not be able to do anything about it.
Right, but you'll know. But.
We'll know.
But that will then help us make a decision about the next budget time, but also, is there places, as Rita talked about, cost savings for this coming budget?
I just remembered the, my follow-up, which was this. What happens, so here we were coming in at zero, or practically zero. I haven't done all the arithmetic. I'll just believe you on that one. What happens if we were to, say, be in the red by any significant amount so that we needed money from outside our budget to cover an expense? Where does that come from? What's the mechanism for that?
Yeah, presumably we would ask the town for.
I don't know whether that's ever happened. Does the town say, okay, fine? Or does the town grumble and talk about it?
I think when Mike first came here, there was something that happened.
Yeah, we had to go to the town council. So, it's, it's the same process. We actually have to go to the town council, talk about what our request, why our, why our request is. If I can remember right, it was because we did not budget enough for the health insurance corridor. Is that, is that correct, Rita?
The corridor.
Yeah. And we were out, what, 1.4 million or something. And we went to the town, we went to the town council that had to go to the RTM.
And Mike had just gotten there.
Yes. Yeah. So, it was a surprise.
And I've seen in other communities, I've heard that superintendents recently have, because of what we're faced with, have had to go. And I'm fortunate that I have Ken and we've watched it very closely because that would not be something I'd want to do.
But other than that, it's fairly a routine process.
There is a process.
I don't want it to happen, but it can happen and that's okay. All right.
Once again, I, I guess if I could request from the finance and facilities is that you guys can think about putting that on your October, September, October with possibly looking at what other areas might we be able to do that. Bev?
Thank you, Kim. Ken, first of all, I'd like to say good luck to you on your new job at Con College. It's been a pleasure serving with you on the finance committee. Every time I asked you a question, I always felt that you were giving me an honest answer and I truly, truly appreciate that.
Thank you.
And you made serving on the finance committee fun. So, you and Sam and Dean and Jay, it's been a good time on the finance committee.
Yeah.
I do have a question to ask you, though. Do you think we're going to see the same savings in, on the teacher account and the special education account next year as we see this year?
Not necessarily. So, we anticipate a certain amount of turnover with retirements and replacements at lower costs, but that, it doesn't always happen in the same way. This particular year, we did have some, some, some terminations that resulted in some savings that won't necessarily happen again. And in the special education tuition, it really just depends on the number of students that come through. It's, it's, it's really hard to predict. We were lucky this year that, that there was some savings in that, in that line.
We do try to hire younger, less experienced teachers and then we, we do a lot of training ourselves. But there are some areas like chemistry and physics, which I've just had to recently hire for, that that might not be possible. But whenever possible, we do try to do that, Beverly, so we can see some cost, you know, savings.
Thank you.
Ken, for function number 1220, that's where it was unfavorable, other special education. I guess it was offset by the special education.
Yeah.
But what, what is other special educa, what falls into that?
So, so, and, and the reason that looks like that is other special education is where our tutor costs are, are captured. And so, we've, we've utilized more tutors in this year than we have in past, but it was offset by not using as many paras that do come out on that next line, the special education line.
And, and next year, we will not be using any of the federal grants anymore. That's all done with, right? From the pandemic?
No. So, the ARPESR grant has one more year to go. It goes through September 30 of 2024. So, we still have a full year left of that in this funding there.
That's great.
Well, we're watching that one closely too, just letting you know.
Any other questions on the object code? Hearing none, let's move on to the insurance.
So, that's the next attachment, number four. So, we were lucky. We actually got the, the claims through May. Usually, there's a month lag, but we're able to get, they happened to have that one ready and we, we were able to send that through. And so, the last one we looked at was March of '23. And at that point, we were, we were riding at about 120% of, of anticipated claims for February and March. But if you'll notice, April and May, they're, they're, they're down significantly to just, just about at what we anticipated for, for those months, slightly over 102% and 105%. So, on a year-to-date basis, we're at 93.5% of our anticipated. We anticipate June to come in similar to, to April and May. And so, we're, we're anticipating that we will be below what our anticipated claims were for the year. So, that, that puts us in a, a good position from our health insurance reserve perspective.
Thank you. Any other?
How much? I mean, how, how much is that? About a million?
No, no. So, through, through May, it's, we're below expected by 725,000. You know, we were probably looking at something like in the $600,000 range.
Oh, that's all.
Yeah. But it's, that's a significant amount of money.
Any other questions on the health?
All right.
All right. So, I guess we'll look at attachment number nine, which is the tuitions. And we did talk about this, I think briefly, at the last COW. But this sheet, you'll, you'll see the first column is this year's or last year's, 2023's approved tuition rates. And then the, the column on the right is what we're proposing for 2024. The general education tuition rates are based upon the net cost per student. We, we apply a factor of 85% to the net cost in an attempt to try to come up with a figure that an additional student would cost the district. Because it wouldn't be all of that cost. It would only be, you know, you're not going to add a whole new teacher for, for every additional student. So, that, that cost on our proposed is at 85% of our net cost per student. Then below special education costs, these are program costs. We added in a cost for the resource room, which is another special education program that, that, we, we did have an incident this past year where we did have a placement where we needed to, to charge that. So, that's why we added in that rate. And then for the additional services, we're, we're basing our additional services off of Lauren's hourly rate schedule, which they published, they publish annually.
We have cohesions?
The proposed rate for high school actually is lower than it was last year.
Yeah. So, so the net cost per student, which is calculated, we, we do what's called the, the EFS report, Education Financial Systems Report annually. And it takes all the costs and everything is allocated by school. So, it happened to be, it looks like that the high school actually went down year over year, the cost.
Okay. Thanks for the explanation.
And Ken, where do those funds come in? Because I know we do have two students, high school students who are in the International Baccalaureate Program who attend Fitch High School. Where does that check go? Does it go into the board account or does it go into town account?
So, technically, the, the, the board receives the funds, but then we, we forward those funds to the town. So, that's part of, when we do the budget, I don't know if you recall, there's a revenue page and there's a, there's a small, what's called other revenue and that's where those, those costs.
So, we account for it there?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll recognize Rita and then I'm going to go to Jay.
Ken, for the special education program cost, so if a child came into our district with multiple disabilities program, does that ever happen? I mean, you know, the.
So, sometimes children are placed within our program, whether it's through a foster situation or those type, or some sort of, where the nexus is a town outside of Groton, that's when we would have to have a rate in order to, to charge that, that nexus town.
Thank you. Jay?
Yes, I just want to echo a bit of what Beverly said. And I want to thank Ken. It's been a pleasure working with you these past few years. And it's going to take quite a bit to get somebody up to speed. But thank you very much and best of luck at Connecticut College.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions on the tuition rate? If not, we'll just move on, knowing that this will be a business item for us later on. And Ken, go enjoy your family.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I'm glad that we can do this for you.
Happy birthday.
Have some joy.
Many more.
Have another trip around the. All right. So, we're going to jump back up to the superintendent. And I believe that Dr. Piazza, our Assistant Superintendent, is on vacation this week.
Yes, he is. But I do see Lauren Cassini, who is on our Student Data Manager. And she's going to help me with, we actually got the data from the high school regarding college career for seniors. And she had put together a nice pie chart so you could look at it visually. And then I have some backup information and as does she on where they ended up going. So, and I'll make sure you get that list.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. I know you've been asking for that.
Yes.
I wanted to find out too, Rita. So, I'll let you, Lauren, take it from here.
Should I share my screen with the, with the attachments or is someone?
Mark is saying yes. Yes, you can share your screen.
Share my screen? Okay.
Yeah.
Let me just pull it up real quick. Okay. Can you guys see that okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, just checking. So, this is really a breakdown based on the survey that was done at Fitch High School of our graduating class, of the students that completed the survey. This is really a breakdown of where our graduates are going, where they're heading off to. So, you could see that 50% of them are heading to a four-year college. And then really, there's just chunks to your college. About 18% are heading to a two-year college. And then you can see over on the side, the breakdown for who's taking a year off, who's still undecided, military apprenticeships, which would fall into that, students who are working with EB as an example, and then those who are going right to employment. So, I don't know if you would like additional information for this or, Susan, I heard you said you had other information on your end?
Yes. Yep. And do you remember the number of students who took the survey? Because this was not 100% of the senior class, unfortunately.
I think it was 191 students had completed the survey.
Oh, okay.
There was maybe, there were maybe, you know, 30 to 40 kids that did not complete it.
Okay.
But I do have that breakdown by, you know, gender, by ethnicity. If you would like that information, otherwise I can, I could provide it to you in a document, whatever.
I, I think both. So, I, I think we would love to have a document, but I would love to hear about what the breakdown is.
Okay. All right. So, looking at male versus female, the majority of our, the majority of our students are doing a two to four-year school. For females, 49 students are heading off to a four-year school where 15 females are heading to a two-year school. And then there's just smatterings of females who are going right into employment, six students to be exact. Two students are actually, two females are taking on an apprenticeship, two are heading to the military, and then six are undecided for females. Of the male population, 20 students are going to a two-year school, 47 males are going to a four-year school, nine are going right to employment, seven of our male students are taking on apprenticeships, five are going into the military, and then 10 are undecided. In terms of ethnicity, the group, the largest group going to a four-year college, I'm sorry, are racial, ethnic, ethnic groups, our white students, 62 students are heading to a four-year school, which is the greatest number, the greatest number within that, that particular, heading in that direction, that four-year school. Where the lowest is the Pacific Islanders, where only one student, Pacific Island student is heading to a four-year school. In terms of going right to employment, we have 11, 11 students in the, in the white group that are going to, straight to employment, where we have the next closest number, I apologize, would be our Hispanic population. Again, this is all relative because depending on how many, you know, a larger percentage of the white population did complete the survey versus other groups. So, I can get to you like actual percentages within each group if you'd like. I'm happy to do that as well. I can get that to you through a document later. Our Hispanic population, five of them are going into the military and four are doing an apprenticeship. Same with our, our, our black population, black and brown students, four are doing an apprenticeship, one is heading to the military. Our Asian population, 17 of them were, decided to go to a four-year school and four of them to a two-year school. And that's really all we have on our Asian population. And our American Indian population, a few of them, we had three students who said they were going to a four-year school, one going to a two-year school, three that were undecided and one going into the military.
I think the percent would help because when it breaks down, we're basically a district that has about 51% students of color and then, you know, 49% students who are white. So, to see how that plays out amongst the different groups, we can certainly get that for you.
That would be great. And I think that, go ahead, Dean.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
I was going to say, you'd have to make a couple of adjustments. Because if you haven't surveyed everybody, I mean, there's a few that haven't, but there's a, there's a good chunk, it sounds like, that have, did not respond. You'd have to first sort of align the response.
Yeah.
With, you know, with the actual demographics and then align those percentages. And at that point, are you, do you have real information? Can you draw real inferences? Or are you speculating too much by taking the sample? This is a statistical thing. Taking the sample and extrapolating. Would the answers be the same if you surveyed everybody?
So, the state actually does a pretty thorough job with that because they actually go to the colleges and universities to find out who actually does attend. And then do they continue to attend? Do they, the ones who say four years, are they there for the four years? The ones who say two years, are they there two years or do they continue on? So, the, we do get that data from Connecticut State Department of Ed, but that's in the future. So, that's another interesting way to look at that data. One of the things, why we had the State Department down to speak with us is they had no way to track. they had no way to track military or academies working with DOD. So we really brought a whole team together with the Navy and the Master Chief Olend and, you know, a whole committee. So we do have some, an avenue to collect this data better so that we can actually see what's happening for our kids who are going into the military or, you know, not being accounted for in the, in the way that the State Department gets the information in a clearinghouse.
I can ask a follow-up. So the state is tracking, or trying to track, the kids that go to college, et cetera. I think a pretty useful measurement, metric, would be how many kids start the four-year program and actually finish in four years. And they realize that four years is rather, some anachronistic number from the Middle Ages. Why college is four years, I don't know why, but it is. There is, I'm always curious to know, when kids start college, other than changing majors, how many don't finish in the four years? Somebody takes, say, maybe six years to finish because they're really kind of drowning. Maybe college wasn't for them, but they're getting it, literally the old college tried it, but it's taken them a hell of a lot longer to finish. In which case, that's something we would need to know at the, at the, at the secondary school level. Are we, is this an indication of the preparation of the students when we send them off to college?
And sometimes cost may be a factor, and a lot of our local community colleges are at no cost to our students. And so that is a really wonderful vehicle to get started and then possibly continue. So, you know, I would want to find out. I'm hoping that we can interview our just graduated group and maybe even invite them back, you know, to talk to us in a focus group, because there's so much information they can give to us that would help us to understand better.
I'm going to recognize Matthew and then Bev.
Thank you. Ms. Cassini, I have some problem with the numbers, but not with, not with your processing of them. But we have an N of, I'm told, 216 in our class of 2023. 191 students finished the survey. That's about 14%, 14, a little over 14%. We have 2% undecided. I'm not quite sure how much. So that's about one-sixth of our student population are not included with these numbers. And I don't know what the solution is, but I think we have to be very careful about drawing conclusions about the entirety of our cohort when we're missing a sixth of the population. I wish I had a solution to offer you, I don't, but we just do need to be mindful about that.
I think you're speaking to Dean's point.
I'm speaking to Dean's point, yeah.
Bev?
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you, Kim. Could you give me the racial breakdown of the four-year college students?
I can't, by number, I, I need to do the percentage, but I can give you the numbers.
Okay.
Would you like those right now?
Yes, if you don't mind.
Okay, for the four-year? So of the students that participated in the survey, and that is an important point to note, so I'm just working with the data that was given, understanding that it is not a reflection of the entire population, and we are working with the state like Susan had mentioned to try to get a better sampling of that and then be able to compare what we have to them to see how, how closely they're aligned, what the missing pieces are. So of our black and brown population, nine students are going to a four-year school. 62 white students are going. 17 Asian students. One Pacific Islander. 16 Hispanic. One Native Ameri-, I'm sorry, American Indian or Native Alaskan, I'm sorry, three of those from that group. And then there is another category which was listed as other, and there are four of those students.
And I think you're right.
Do the students put their name on the survey?
Let me go back, their student ID.
Their student ID.
I don't believe your name, no, their name is not on it, sorry.
But the ID numbers are on it?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we can get a better handle on it, Beverly, if we look at the percentage of the students who took it and who are in those different disaggregated domains.
Can you say that again, Susan, please?
So, in other words, I think if we look at the percent of the students who took it and out of those different categories, we'll have a better understanding of what that means, rather than just the raw number.
Now, when students are undecided, does that mean that they applied for college, but they don't know if they're going to go, or they didn't apply to a college, or they didn't do anything and they just don't know what they're doing?
It was not specified. A year off is simply they don't know what they're doing. They're taking a year off to decide. We're undecided is really, it could be any, any of the above, what you just mentioned. They just don't have a plan at this point. They're not sure exactly what they want to do.
And what kind of guidance do we give the undecided students?
Well, so I know at the high school, and I'm not sure if Ted is on to, to speak more to this, but I do know that the guidance counselors work with individual students, particularly those 11th and 12th graders through the Navion system, to help them plan for, and they meet with them throughout their 11th and 12th grade year to look at their interests, even dating back to, you know, when they're freshmen, begin with interest surveys, things to that nature, and then trying to fine-tune it. Is this, is this a direction you're looking to go? If it, if it is, these are the steps that you need to take.
Yeah.
One last question. Nine black students going to college, is that normal for Fitch High School? Or is that a low number for this year, or is that about the average number every year?
I'm a little concerned about these numbers in the fact that it just doesn't seem that this is the whole population and that we're looking at number versus percentage. And I'm wondering if we could have a better sense of this. Because I, if, if this raw information that we're getting is what it is, we, we have a lot of work to do. So Bev, I, I don't know, I'm not reading, I'm not trying to read your mind, but I'm, I'm kind of concerned about what this data is presenting to us. And I'm also not quite sure if this is, I don't know what the word I'm looking for, but is in the most exact form that we need to be able to sort of support this. And so, so Bev, I'm really sorry if I cut you off, and please feel free to continue, but that, that's my worry about this conversation. One second. So Bev, once again, I apologize. If I don't hear back, I'll do Liz and then Rita.
I think what Beverly wants, and I, I would like to see this too, is how does this compare to the last five, 10 years? I want to see if we are, has, has the populations, the different populations, have they increased their abilities? I want to know if we are addressing inequity. And if we are, then why aren't they, have these numbers actually gone up? Or are they turning around and going down? And if it's going down, then why? And I think we really need to, but we can't do anything. We, you know, the numbers are, are fine. I, I'm having a difficult time with these numbers. And there's also a little place there next to year off and undecided that doesn't have anything identified. And so, and it's not enough kids. It really isn't. So we need to know, and I know that you can't get that, I'm not saying anything to you. I'm saying, you know, this, these, this is, in my opinion, flawed data.
Well, I don't know if it's flawed data, it's just not complete, and then it leaves us to ask a whole bunch of questions. And Lauren, I know that you're plotting your way around with the Board of Ed, but I think one of the things that I really appreciate about this group of people is that we're just looking at, one, how are we doing? And how are we doing not in terms of at the moment, but how are we doing in terms of historical data? And also, how are we doing with all the different, sort of, how are we doing with people who are black? How are we doing with people who are brown, Pacific Islander, Native American? And so those are just, that's just data that's just really important for the board. But Lauren, once again, thank you so much for kind of putting together this and us actually pointing out that, that this is not necessarily a complete outlook for us. But I just, in terms of having this conversation, I don't want us to keep on going round and round. And maybe, and maybe Susan and Lauren can kind of think about how to present this again in a way that kind of, that has more meat to it. Which is one of the things that we should be very proud of, is that we are a board that likes to have a lot of information.
Kim, may I offer, I'm sorry, re- first.
Oh, I, I would just prefer not to have this pie chart, but to actually have, like, you know, four-year college, two-year college, and have it written. Because when you look at the, the military, 3.7%, and then you look at the green, that's 4.7%, you know, it's just, it's just confusing, and the little boxes, it's kind of hard to really, they don't look quite right to me, the graph. But again, Dean pointed out that you look at it kind of this way, so that maybe, maybe the colors.
Maybe it looks better.
Yeah. So, but I would love to know from the year before and the year before that, if there are fewer students going to four-year college, two-year colleges. And also, I was surprised at, that fewer students were going to the military this year, which was a real surprise to me when I, I was very nosy and I asked students, a lot of them, when they were graduating, what they were doing the next year. And usually you have, even the ones when the principal asks them to stand up that are going to the military, sometimes we usually have 20. And, and I noticed that there were maybe six or seven, I, and so... So can I tell you the Navy is having a hard time, the military service in having, with enlisted? They're not enlisting. We just got that word.
So I want to keep us, I want to keep us...
So anyway, I would like it not in a pie chart in the future.
Okay.
Matthew? And maybe last year's information.
Yes, got it. Matthew?
My concern about the classifications that we've heard is that they've been on gender and racial lines. And I'm not denigrating the importance of these, but if we have a category X which has 10 people in it going to college, and seven of them, even though they're minorities, come from very wealthy families, we're not looking at the socioeconomics filter. So I would love to see, and, and again, there's nothing negative whatsoever. You, you only can work with what you've got. But if we could look at the percentage of socio-economic status by whether it's free lunch or whatever other imperfect metric we have, and compare that to the enrollment of that class, then we'll have a sense of how we're doing if we're...
Perfect point. Matthew, perfect point. Lauren, once again, thank you. Dean?
Kim, I did have something to point out. It's not major, however. I added up the numbers that you gave us under four-year college, and I add up, I get 112 when there are 96 reported. So maybe I got the numbers wrong. I added them twice, so I added the numbers that I have correctly. Oh, I know, that's, that's fine. I added them up by, by racial group.
We'll take a closer look at that.
So...
Yeah, and I'll, I'll go back to the high school just to make sure the data is accurate. All right. So just to leave you with a little thought, and you'll get a whole comprehensive list. We've got kids going to American University, Belmont, Bentley, Boston, Brown, Bryant, Central, Eastern, Southern, all of our Connecticut State universities. We have as many as 16 going to University of Connecticut. We have one going to Yale, and I don't see Harvard, but I see Hofstra. We also have Emmanuel, Endicott, Hofstra, Ithaca. So quite a variety of schools all across the country. Keene State, Naval Academy, and Coast Guard Academy. So I look forward to giving you this comprehensive list. But I would say Three Rivers Community College, 31. So there is incentive for that, so I'm proud of that, too. So, just to let you know a few. But we'll, we'll work together and we'll work with the high school to see if they can glean some light on this and with the counselors. Because we can only do it by survey to get the kids' information, sometimes the data is kind of flawed going out the gate. That's why we have to look at the, like, the State Department of Education that really validates the data to see where do they actually go and do they stay?
I appreciate the style about it.
We haven't had it in a while.
I know, I appreciate that. Lauren, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lauren.
Let's move on to the technology update.
Good evening, everyone. How are you?
Good, and you?
I'm Clint Kennedy, I'm the Director of Technology. I'm going to run you through a short list of some of the projects that we have completed over the course of this school year to get you an update, as well as some of the plans for the summer so that we can launch in the fall in a better way. As most of you know, if not all of you, summer is a very important time for the tech department. All year is important, but especially summer, while students are on summer break and teachers as well, we have an opportunity to go in, refurbish, reset, update, make sure things are set and ready to go for the next year. So I'm going to do kind of a lightning round. Please stop me if you have questions or comments or what have you, so thank you. First and foremost, we've started our, our typical round of security updates. The big one, as many of you are aware, are the infrastructure changes that we're making. If you recall my three-layer cake around cameras and security equipment and so forth that I'm working with Maintenance Department, we have officially launched the upgrade in our first two layers, both the network infrastructure so that we can pull this all together into a secure account for the superintendent, for the Director of Maintenance, for the Police Department, so forth. And we've started the purchasing of cameras, which we'll go in over the summer so that we're ready for the fall. So that program, that project is underway. I will keep you abreast of that, but we're, we're headed in the right direction, and I'm hoping to have that fully implemented by day one of school in the fall. Security related, we are going through all of our system upgrades and checks. We've met with our cyber insurance company to make sure we're adhering to all of their suggestions and so forth with the policy. And as you may recall, we are implementing two-factor authentication. We have rolled that out across all certified staff over this last year. If you're not familiar with two-factor authentication, when you get a six-digit, eight-digit code on your cell phone as a text message as you try to log into an account, that's an example of two-factor authentication. The good news is with our efforts and the efforts across the country with public schools doing this work, the premiums for cyber insurance have actually leveled off and gone down somewhat. The number, I hate to say this publicly because I don't want to jinx us, but the actual number of attacks over this past 12-month period has decreased as our cyber insurance providers have required two-factor authentication across public school districts. So us, along with our other 168 public school districts, have been busy doing this, and I think it's making a difference. Nothing is 100%. We have to always be vigilant, but I think it's been helpful, and we're going to continue that practice. So that is, that's security. Devices update, quickly. We spent a lot of time at the end of the school year checking in, fixing, repairing, cleaning, and inventorying all student Chromebooks aged grades five through 11. We wanted to make sure that we were not taking those back, that they had fully functioning devices so that they can participate in many of these summer learning activities that were planned. That has been done. They have those, those Chromebooks. We are going to make some changes and updates over the summer, and we'll be reissuing some of those new ones starting at the beginning of school year, new student orientation and so forth. Some of those coming back from the seniors that we'll repair and fix and then put back out into the, into the ecosystem. Another big project as far as devices go, we did receive funding through the federal E-Rate program. So we're going to be rewiring about two-thirds of the wiring that goes to our wireless access points, much like that. Over 98% of the data that flows through our network in Groton Public Schools is actually Wi-Fi, wireless data. Very few things are actually plugged into the network. So we feel it's important to continue to look at that and upgrade and so forth, and that has been a bottleneck. So we're going to be doing that over the summer. Two quick related notes, too. We just finished year one of leasing all teacher and administrator laptops. It went very well. I'm really happy that you provided that opportunity to do that. We were able to get all like-for-like one models because we're leasing with a warranty on that, and that went really well this year. And this was the first year that we had 100% of classrooms with a new, modern Promethean board. So we just finished year one of that, along with training and so forth. We will continue to do, have professional development opportunities around that, on how we use those for good instruction, for new teachers that are coming in, refreshers for others, and taking that use of that somewhat deeper. for others, and taking that use of that somewhat deeper. On the communications front, two major things to, to make you aware of. You've heard of Parent Square. Parent Square is a new communications product that many districts around the country are starting to use. It's starting to build kind of critical mass. We ran a full-year pilot with Parent Square at Thames River this year, and we did surveying of it with parents and teachers and so forth. It was overwhelmingly supported as a better way to communicate. So that will be rolled out across the entire district, starting in twenty-three, twenty-four. One of the highlights is, we now have the ability to text message parents, and unique subsets of parents, and so forth. And if you get the text message, and you read it, you don't get a phone call.
And, and an email, and everything else.
Yeah, that's a, it does email and all that stuff, too. But that's on a standard alert. Obviously, we still have the ability, in an emergency situation, to blast information, voice, text, email, and so forth. So, but we're really trying to refine our ability to communicate, so that we're not shouting at people all the time, and over-communicating, and it becomes noise. We want to make sure that we can get the signal in time to the right people, in a way. Parent Square is also wonderful, too. It has a great dashboard that allows us to refine from what we're sending across the whole district, down to an individual parent, so that we can actually monitor how we're communicating, and then make, have a conversation and make decisions. Are we over-communicating? Are we under-communicating? How could we be better in doing that? So very excited about that. Also, in communications, we are updating the websites. There's a refresh over the summer, and we should be launching those middle of August. We're really taking the approach where the websites need to be modern, clean, have the information that the public wants to see. This is a public-facing face of Groton Public Schools. Could be parents who are shopping for school districts, or coming into the community and need information, all the way through Parent Square, which really is an internal-focused communication tool, specifically between classroom teacher and parents, within our individual schools, within the district overall, around professional development opportunities and so forth. So we're trying to balance those two, improve both, but really focus on the target audiences for each one of those. Last but not least, one of the things that I'm really excited about is, we just implemented Learn Platform. It's basically a way, it does three things for us. It provides us real-time data analytics around how we're using software and web-based applications. The state of Connecticut has been using this, primarily as a way for us to be able to vet a lot of these products from a student data privacy perspective, based on a lot of the, the legislations that's happened at the, at the state level over the last three years. Data privacy has really been focused upon, which I think is a good thing, but it also makes it somewhat harder to get the right tool, digital tools, in the right hand of students, without an efficient process to make sure that these tools have been vetted and are appropriate for students, and so forth. So now that we're using this, we can see in real time, how we're using these different tools. Are we using the ones that have been vetted? Are there's ones coming through that have not been vetted, and so forth? How we are licensing these products, so we can more, be more efficient, so the number of licenses we're purchasing matches more closely with the actual number of licenses that are being used over the course of, of time. But also, a new process that we're streamlining for teachers to be able to ask for, and have a review process around new tools that come in. We get a lot of requests from certain tools. And, and that's wonderful, and I'm happy, and we would encourage that with educators making some of these decisions, or pushing this forward. But there needs to be a vetting process around curriculum. There needs to be a vetting process around student data privacy. There needs to be a budget consideration for that. And then there needs to be an IT perspective of, how can we efficiently make this available safely to teachers and students? That is a lot of stuff, to use a technical term. I want to help shrink that, do it appropriately, but shrink the time that we can make those decisions, and make sure we're hitting all those points, so that we can get these tools, when appropriate, in the hands of, of teachers and students. So I'm excited about that going in. And it will help us with budget time, too, because we finally have one single list of truth, if you will, of all of our licensing, multi-year contracts, single-year contracts, number of licenses and so forth. We have all that information, but we're finally have the opportunity to bring it together into one list that's easy to manage, and will help, you all help us make decisions, and for us to manage that over time. So I'm really excited about that.
How many Learn districts are part of that now?
So the state of Connecticut has that Learn platform overall, but it's really just a library. They obviously don't know what we're purchasing and so forth. I think probably about forty, forty-five percent of districts are using this, because they see it as a useful tool that pays for itself, and then some, because of the ability to manage these tools.
It's already helped me make a few decisions.
Yes, it, it certainly has. And again, student data privacy is obviously a very important thing that we do. And, and vetting those tools, this tool helps make that possible.
Thank you.
I have one quick question. This Parent Square, does that take away all the multiple different ways that, like, each classroom teacher has to, to be talking to their students, or like, a parent who might have three or four kids in the district, and three or four different teachers has three or four different communication tools?
Yep.
One of the downsides for having a beta test this year was, Thames River parents did have, could potentially have multiple streams of communication, if they also had a child at Groton Middle School, or Fitch High School, and so forth. And, and I know that was a concern, and we tried to mitigate that as best we could. I was really excited, we had the opportunity to dive deep. The principal at Thames River was great, the, some of the instructional, instructional technology coaches were great. We really dove deep and learned a bunch of lessons on how to implement that, and grow across the district. So with that caveat that you brought up, I think it was well worth doing that. And yes, that's a very long way of saying, we're, we're standardizing on a single platform, K to twelve.
It really takes school messenger to a, a different level of communication, but all the classroom dojos, and reminds, and all those other things that we had to get during COVID King all go away.
Yeah.
And cost less money, because we're not paying for all those differences.
We're just doing the one thing.
Any other questions? Dean?
You mentioned insurance, just a small matter. So if we have a successful attack, I know it's hard to quantify the, because this district is not really a, a business, so to speak, and it is and it isn't. But let's just say that we're being held for ransom. Even though we can't quantify a, a day of the system being down in the school system, what's that worth? Suppose we're, we're being asked for X dollars in ransom. Does our insurance cover that, or are we on our own there?
As purely hypothetical.
Yeah.
Hasn't, hasn't happened. We would, through the, the cyber insurance coverage, would provide us access to experts to, to look at the entire situation, understand the potential outage time, data loss, et cetera, and then help guide, make a decision on whether a ransom should be paid or not. And again, I'm speaking hypothetically, and not my personal opinion, just what's happened out there. I have my own thoughts about whether a ransom should be paid or not, but that's a, a case by case basis. So they would help do that, and, and if a, if purely hypothetically, a ransom were to be paid, and I'm not saying we would, that is something that would be covered by those, that insurance.
Okay, just curious.
And sadly, that does happen quite a bit, even to schools.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks for all you do. All right, we're gonna, yes. Thank you, Clint. Go ahead.
All right.
Next.
Okay, Lauren, we're up with our Alliance update. I just wanted to set the stage while you get ready to pull up the presentation. So I'll get started on our Alliance friends. So as you know, being an Alliance district, even though we're one of the last ones in, and one of the top performers, we do get a lot of attention by being an Alliance district. We have a, a partner at the State Department, Greg Dresko, and he has come to Groton probably four or five times so far this year. He's coming back in July. We keep track, because there have been dollars attached to this, beyond the twenty-five million dollars that we can ascertain and continue to receive. But we do get a couple hundred thousand dollars each year. We don't know about next year. It's still not determined yet. But with that, we keep an, what we call an Alliance tracker, and it tracks the data. We set goals, and it track, and we really wanted you to see how comprehensive this was. So when we put together the, this plan to showcase this, I wanted you to be aware of the, what we're held accountable for with the funds, and being an Alliance partner. So we look at four main topics: talent, academics, culture and climate, and operations. We call it TACO. So with the talent, we're looking at professional learning. We're looking at academics with student learning, culture and climate, a sense of belonging, and operations, systems to support schools. And we're going to kind of take you through the slideshow, to really showcase what some of these goals are, what each category means, and what are some of the specific priorities in the grant. So when the state of Connecticut comes, we look at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and then the end of the year, and how things, how our data looks. And he really takes us through the site, which we go to all the time at the state of Connecticut, and looks at plethora of data, that really help us to know, how are we doing? And that's what the board wants to know. And then I'm able to bring it back and share with the board, the how are we doing? And we tend to look at a lot of the academics, but we also look at all the other ingredients that go, that are collected data-wise, from attendance to suspensions and expulsions, and the classes that kids are taking. So they really do a deep dive, and it's with the support from the State Department of Ed that we're able to do this, and get the support for it. So as I just kind of gave the prelude, I think that you'll be able to take us through a little bit with Lauren, with the talent, and some of the, the focus this year. I see in talent, one of the biggest focuses has been the science of reading. And to really have expertise in this area, and bring staff together, with our coaches, and our administrators, and under, really, my, my leadership and the Assistant Superintendent, we've both been really teaming on this work. And I feel like we're getting to a good place with that. There's more work this summer, and I'm excited to see the rollout of the phonics with the University of Florida model. So do you want to take it on?
So as Susan had said, there's really four domains that the state looks closely at, in terms of accountability for our district as an Alliance district. And the first is talent, which is a focus on, on the professionals, and professional, professional development, professional learning. How are we increasing the expertise of the staff in our buildings? And so one of the major focuses has really been on the recruitment, developing, retaining high-qualified and diverse staff, and some of our key points for this year through the Alliance, as Susan had said, the curricular revisions, grounded in evidence-based practices. So really looking at the science of reading, and having our experts in that area help to build and shift our curriculum to meet those needs. Embedded coaching that happens at each of the schools, right within the classroom, to make sure those practices are where they need to be, and are, are implemented the way they should be. Another area is our teacher-in-residence program, and then our team mentoring. So the teacher-in-residence is really about building our, our staff, looking to recruit. And the team is, once we've pulled them on, supporting them through their beginning years. And so as Susan had said, really just quick synopsis of, of all of this is that we have revised, successfully revised, the K-two core program, including interventions. And over the summer, they're going to finish the work with phonics to K-three. We have hired now four of our teacher-in-residents, and we're looking to bring on three more additional teacher-in-residents next year. And we're in a continual process of checking certifications, making sure renewals are in place for team mentoring, and encouraging new enrollment, including paper readers, paper reviewers, the team program. And so this is just sort of an overview of the work that happens within the talent when we present to Greg Dresko, who is our Alliance liaison from the state. This is what he's specifically looking at. So it's broken into three priorities that we have focused on for the year. The first one being that embedding, embedded coaching, using the literacy and math specialists, and then also using them in the SRBI or intervention process. And so we are required to look at what, what is our priority? Where are we at? And are we likely to achieve the goal we create? And so in terms of where we are at with our curriculum, and coaching, and building our program, we've had the science of expert, the science of reading experts, helping alongside with the literacy coaches, which I know they presented to you back in, I believe, May, the new curriculum for the K-three phonics, and, and embedding not only that, but using those universal screeners to identify students who may be in need of interventions. And so when you look at the, the outcome, where are we at, you see likely to achieve, under implementation status. And so based on this priority, and where we were, we are at, we have to set goals for ourselves. So based on the goals we have set, we do not have that information yet. This information will come from our Summit of Assessment, so S-Back, SAT. So we're still looking to gather all of that. It's not finalized and open to the public yet, but based on the work we've done, we are likely to achieve our goal. Again, priority two, look specifically at recruiting a diversified staff. We're doing this, we put a lot of time and energy into the Groom Room program, which is our teacher-in-residence, and, and scholarships for peer professionals to come certified teachers. And we are in the second year of this, and as I had mentioned, there are four teacher-in-residents who are now fully employed, and are receiving that, that mentor programming through team. And next year, we're taking on three additional. So we actually have achieved our goal for this priority, and so next year, we'll look to add on to that goal. And the last one is to attract, retain, and bolster the performance of staff with additional mentors and paper reviewers. And so GPS continually works through a cycle of looking at the certifications, the renewals, encouraging new enrollment for mentorships and paper reviewers. And so we have achieved that as well.
So we have a question from one of the board members. Lauren?
Hi. Yes. Just for the general public, could you please explain the teacher-in-residency program that we have implemented last year, and also what team mentoring means? Because, you know, we, it's good for people to understand, you know, what we're talking about. So I don't know if Susan wants to do it, or it's hard to do it from the screen.
Well, the teacher-in-residency program is a program supported by the Connecticut State Department of Education, and it was brought to us a few years ago to help us get more teachers, you know, in our schools that represent our community. So to get more people of color, more people with diversity backgrounds. And as Lauren said, the first year we had two, and then we had another two, and then this year we have three. And they all have had a year where they spent with a mentor teacher, and some really highly-qualified master teachers here in Groton, so that they were prepared then to have their own classroom. And, you know, it's a promise where if there is a position available, they are able to take on that position, only if there is one. And we fortunately had some shifts and movement with retirement, so we've been able to place all four, and we're looking forward to having another three.
But in terms of how you become a teacher-in-residence, that's what I think it's important for the public to understand.
So it's really a program that's vetted through the State Department, and they have to have certain qualifications, and they then are presented to the districts, and then we do an interview process to see who we're going to be hiring. So, you know, we're really pretty fortunate to have the people that have come to us and will be with us.
But there is a cost to the district, as well as the state picks up some.
Right. It's, it's a split cost for the internship. I don't have the dollar amount, but it is, we used to have interns all the time from the colleges, and that kind of went away, unfortunately. It was a great way to really train new teachers. It was, gave them much more than just their college experience, so we're really happy to have this. And then the team mentors, whenever you have a new teacher, brand-new to a district, brand-new to teaching, they go through a series of about three to four years of studies, where they really are doing performance tasks throughout the year, whether it's around planning their lessons, or delivering their lessons, or how they're assessing students. And with their mentor teacher, who's right by their side, usually typically next door in the classroom, or right down the hall, they really get a lot of support. And support in their classroom, they get to watch and observe other master teachers in the school. So we really do support them, so that they will become a master teacher as well in the future. And they have to pass all these qualifications through the state, in order to be able to be certified.
I would recognize Bed, and then Liz.
I just, there was one question on the last line.
I just, there was one question on the last line on the second page underneath talent where it says, monitor certification renewal for team mentoring and then encourage new enrollment. I thought every new teacher had to be enrolled.
I think we're talking about the mentor teachers.
Oh, encouraging the mentors.
Encouraging our mentor teachers and then their teachers who do read all the papers that the teachers have submitted. And so we have a really wonderful group of teachers who really enjoy that work. And, um, the state actually pays them to do that work.
Right. And, you know, maybe we could just put ment, the mentors.
Yeah, we'll add that.
So Bev?
Susan, um, what qualifications do you need to be a teacher in residence? Do you already have to have a college degree and, uh, and what other qual, is that so? And what qualifications do you have to have? And, um, the goal, my second question is, um, priority one point two is to recruit a diversified staff. Out of the seven, um, teachers in residence, what, what's the diversity breakdown for those seven teachers?
Um, I think that, I don't have it off the top of my head is, you know, specifically, but I think out of the seven, um, the majority of them, five maybe are teachers of color and two others may not be. So the majority absolutely are teachers of color. Um, sometimes when they cast the net, sometimes they think they need to cast it a little wider. But it is, they actually have their undergraduate and they're working on a master's degree. So very typical of what we used to see at Sacred Heart and Southern and UConn where, you know, you had teachers who were going through a master's program and then they were interning while interning in a school and, and really getting that really hands-on experience in the classroom where a lot of our good teaching, learning happens, of course.
Liz?
Yeah, I wanted to know if this is primarily an elementary school?
Yes.
All right. I, I kind of thought so. Is there any way of expanding this to high school?
We've asked the state if they can contemplate middle school and high school because we see a need in the secondary as well. But in our, in our district, we definitely needed to bolster the elementary. It's not where the middle school and high school happens to be at this point.
Thank you, Lauren. Let's move on.
So the way Lauren broke this out very nicely is she's got like, the first page is really the summary of it. And the second page gives you really the in-depth look of what were those priorities that we set and where are we likely to achieve? So we can just give the overview of this and see if people have questions, Lauren, for the academics.
Okay. So again, for the act, for the talent, it's really about developing our professionals. Where the academic is looking at our curriculum and developing our curriculum and, and how we're going to instruct students accordingly. Um, and so really the focus and the priorities here, as you're aware, was the phonics piece, um, embedding the science of reading, uh, K three and developing our teachers to be able to in, instruct in that in the area of expertise. Um, including in that is the tiered process for, uh, interventions. So that's your SRBI K twelve, uh, curricular writing, um, to support language learners. So students who may speak more than one language or who come in not speaking English. And then, uh, professional learning to support culturally responsive teaching. So the work that has happened there around, and I'm sure you're familiar with the names, uh, Sonia Cherry Paul, Cornelius Minor, having them come in, um, and coach teachers and, and build the curriculum to do all of the things that we, we would want from our curriculum to engage our students and to give them the very best instruction.
And it includes the instruction and the assessments. I see that we've written down Dibbles. We've actually had an opportunity to pilot several recommended, um, tools that the state has put out there. And so we're looking at the adoption of Dibbles eight, but we may be looking at a version that is, um, more done digitally, but you still listen to children read and you, you keep track of what's happening with their reading.
Yeah. So it's electronic Dibbles. It's called the M class. Um, so we're looking to pilot that as well. Um, and so again, on these, these are all based on the, the goals are based on our summit of assessments, which we don't have that information complete yet and open for the public. Um, but we, we are likely to achieve, um, as, as our status.
Yep.
Do you have any questions about?
Anybody with, with questions on the academics?
Susan, just once again quickly, when is, when do you expect the data?
So we've actually been seeing some of the data, but it's not been made public yet. So we're able to take a look at what's been coming in, but as soon as it's made public, I will get it to the board.
I think we have it on the, like, September, October, October?
I know, but I feel like the data came back to us sooner this year, so you might even get it sooner. So I don't know. They're getting better and better with this data.
So if we can move through culture and operations, that'd be great.
Yeah, they are anticipating, um, August, I believe.
Yeah.
Publicizing it.
Oh, that'd be fun for you, Lauren, putting all that together.
She'll get some help.
So in term, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I said, we team on those things. She won't have to do it alone. We'll work with her.
In terms of the culture and climate, if you remember, that's really like the feeling within the building, um, making sure students feel welcome, safe, um, supported in the building and their families as well. So it's a community feel for our buildings. Um, and really our, a large part of our focus has been on the engagement piece and the attendance piece. Um, so spending time surveying families on issues that are of interest to them or that they may need support with. Uh, school and district data teams identifying students who are at risk for being chronically absent. Um, we know how that impacts our, um, our students. Um, expanding the work of the Safe School Climate Committee to provide, uh, positive interventions, um, and supports for families. And then the PPS staff assisting families with interventions and supports to overcome barriers. So, um, really there have been a lot of great gains. All schools meet regularly to look at various data points around attendance, um, chronic students who may be considered chronically absent and then providing them with the supports they potentially could need. We follow not just the district policy, but most of the schools are, are above and beyond in what they are doing to monitor this absenteeism. I mean, for supports that families are in need of and just trying to figure out what those supports may be. Um, they're personalized, um, for individual families many times. We've also increased our community coordinators, the hours that they have where they're really a liaison for family engagement, bringing them, uh, developing school events to bring families in, make them feel part of the building. We also had a gentleman by the name of Scott Driscoll, who came into the district, um, to deliver messages about social media. Cause we know particularly it's, you know, younger and younger every, every year, but particularly, uh, you know, our intermediate grades and above. Um, and then some of the groups that we are partnered with, um, that sort of summarizes where we are at with that, the work that has happened. And we have through this work achieved, we do know we have achieved our goal. We have begun to lower our chronic absenteeism, um, you know, post pandemic. And so we're going to continue with those efforts and keep building on them to make sure that we eventually get those numbers down where we really want them in terms of attendance.
The state says five percent and everybody in the state is way far away from that. So we have, we have a ways to go with that. This is a number you want to see decrease.
Bev? Question?
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Um, on priority three point three says provide surveys to parents. Did you get a, um, can we get a, see the results of that survey?
You most certainly will. We gave it towards the late spring, so I haven't even really delved into look at the data, but we will be doing that this summer and bringing it to you.
Okay. Thank you, Susan.
Uh huh.
And you may have said it, I'm having a hard time hearing. Uh, with regard three point one, it says achieved. If, if you've already said this, I apologize for asking again. How do we, I mean, where are we in terms of metrics, in terms of attendance problems? Where are we compared to where were we? Can you give us some color on that?
So we, we've looked at our attendance according to this state data that's just kind of filtering in, but has not been validated yet. So just looking as a precursor to the data that's starting to roll in, our numbers look better. That means they're decreasing. So that's what we want to see is the growth. And sometimes the growth is the decline in chronic absenteeism, so.
So maybe one of the things that we should be thinking about tonight, hearing this, is just kind of briefly have us go over what these, what the taco stands for, but knowing that we need to see that.
We'll go back to it.
That we need to have the data that goes along with it because how do we know? And once again, as always, we like to kind of see where we've been to where we, where we are now.
Right. You'll be seeing that.
So if we could just kind of like, just once again, kind of sum up that because this doesn't, um, without having data, which we don't have yet. Um, and, um, is just to kind of go through this and then we'll.
I'm kind of prepping you that this is coming.
Right. I'm just laying the land.
Yep. Laying, laying the field here.
Any other questions about culture and climate? If not, let's move on to operations.
Okay. So in terms of operations, if you remember, that's really, operations really talks about like the systems, right? So, um, all the systems that make our schools, our school or district really work and run. Um, and so based on that, we're always looking, we're researching and evaluating the efficiency of, um, the, the systems that are in place, um, the current systems and looking to always improve those, make potential improvements. So some of the work that has happened this year or has started this year was, um, identifying a tracking system uh, to manage all the various data points, um, and, and how to do that, what the best route would be. Um, integrating technology for differentiation at the tier one levels specifically to support special populations such as our English learners and then funding after-school literacy and math clubs and tutoring. Um, and so really we go through a technology audit every year. Um, we track the usage of the instructional tools that are currently available to us and their effectiveness. And we compare such as Lexia Dreambox. And then we compare, we cross-reference those with, um, some of our other information like our, uh, summit of assessments to see, are we, you know, what is the relationship between the amount of time used on Dreambox and the, um, the gains that we're making in our assessments? Um, we are still researching an, a district data dashboard. We did not want to jump into this, um, particularly because there were, you know, a lot of changes that took place this year. Um, there are a few that are on the table, but we have not committed to anything at this point. Um, cause we want to make sure it's really, it, it's worth what, what we would be, um, using it for. Um, and then the after-school programs are, have a steam focus, uh, with focuses on attendance at the middle and high school, really finding engaging activities after school. Um, at the elementary school, they have tutoring as an example in the different areas, reading, math. Um, they have after-school activities, intramurals, so more or less that's, that's the summary of it. And again, we're, we're at a likely to achieve status because we don't have that, that data available wholly yet.
And we've really committed to all those things in the summertime as well. So, um, we can get you that information. I was really excited to see the number of students that are getting tutoring this summer, for instance, in both reading and math.
Those will be numbers that I'm hoping that we'll get with the data as well.
Yep. We can do that.
So I, I just, I'm looking over underneath operations. If, if you could, when you rewrite this, where it says, um, differentiation at tier one, including special populations, I just sort of don't like the way that's phrased. If you could maybe just put some of the populations that you're talking about, it just, and also the second to the last line, and it's repeated on the next page too, each school has, has after-school tutor. It's just not worded correctly. Is it tutors or one? Is it one for each school? Is it more than one? What are they, who are they tutoring? And so I just think that it needs to be, um, when you rewrite this, we could think about some of those things. That's all.
So Lauren, thank you so much for spending your evening. I'm sure this was your desire to spend a, um, Monday evening with the board. Um, and we look forward to, or continue to work with you specifically as you get more data and you can actually help us make sense of this stuff. Um, but what I do appreciate, and I'm, I'm sorry guys, that this was kind of a little bit tedious, that it's kind of nice to be able to kind of have the background because when we get the, when we get the data, we can meld. Um, Lauren is not going to have to spend so much time kind of like, like orienting ourselves to everything because we have at least had that, um, hit, um, hit once. So once again, Lauren, thank you so much, um, for your time and for your talent. And looking forward to hearing what the data has to say for this.
Thank you, Lauren. Appreciate it.
If we don't have anything more, let us move on to, um, Director of Building and Grounds and let's see if we can get this party going.
There you go, Sam. Well, you're on.
Good evening.
I didn't even miss you. I mean, like, I, I always miss you, Sam, but like, I'm actually going to call on you.
I knew you wouldn't forgive me. Um, so I, I have a, a bunch of stuff here to report on tonight. Uh, at about five o'clock this morning, uh, Savvy Corporation showed up to begin the sewer repair at Fitch High School. So we started that project. Uh, that section of the building is closed down for about a week here, uh, and hopefully that's all it takes. But we'll know better tomorrow after they do another assessment after having done a couple of days' work on that. We've also, uh, in the meantime, selected a contractor. Uh, we went out to bid and selected a contractor for the Northeast Academy Drainage Project. And we're just awaiting them, uh, to present their schedule to us. So they'll be coming shortly for the Northeast Academy Drainage Project. Uh, in the meantime, uh, again, this morning, uh, our air duct cleaning company came and began, uh, the cleaning of the air ducts at Northeast Academy. They recommend it about every four or five years. So, uh, we're back at Northeast Academy doing that this year. We'll move on to, uh, Catherine Kolnasky School next and then on to the high school before the summer's over with the air duct cleaning project. Fortunately, we, uh, we signed a contract, uh, just the other day, uh, regarding, uh, LED lighting upgrades at Fitch High School. It was an expensive project, but, um, it's expected to pay it, uh, pay itself back within five years. Uh, and, uh, if you've seen the electric rates recently, I think it may actually pay off even sooner than that if we're, we're fortunate. Uh, Groton Middle School Field Light Project, uh, we got zoning board of appeals approval. The, the light poles are a little taller than, um, would be allowed in that zone. However, the zoning board of appeals did allow that, so we got that. And a site plan has been submitted to the town. And so we'll be attending the meeting once we're notified, uh, of when that meeting will be, which will be coming up shortly. So that again, continues to move along as expected. Uh, the solar project at the Groton Middle School and Mystic River Magnet Schools. Uh, we got EverSource approval for interconnection. The permit application has been submitted to the town. And, uh, so again, we're awaiting the town approval on that so that we can move forward with that. Uh, i- if you'll allow me, I also like to report on some food service stuff that's happening in case you haven't already been there. Uh, Eastern Point Beach, uh, concession is in oper, full operation. Uh, this weekend turned out pretty good. Uh, Sunday, I guess it wasn't so hot, uh, earlier in the day, but when the sun came out, uh, uh, the sails went up pretty quickly. So, uh, with the heat and humidity in the afternoon, we did okay. So that project's going on. We have three full-time employees that would normally be on unemployment or finding something else to do during the summer, uh, that will be working there. And up to five student, uh, college students, uh, I think there's one high school kid and, and a few, uh, college students that have come back to work again this year at the concession stand. So again, it's a, a great opportunity for us to, uh, keep kids busy and, and, and give them some, some, uh, real life experience in, in working in the food business. You'll see later on, on your agenda, I think, there's, um, a donation was made by the city of Groton, uh, for Garden Fresh Bags. Now these are, um, uh, all local, uh, products that will be put in the bags and, and distributed. Now, these are all local products that will be put in the bags and distributed at Parks and Rec sites, at Branford Manor, and also at a couple of Navy sites. So Ernie and Bill from, from that department, along with some of the food service workers, will be handing them out. And we've also hired three high school students to actually build the bags or to pack the bags. So that project will be continuing on.
Any questions for Sam? So you're really not busy at all.
I think we still have time to do a couple more things, so.
Okay, okay, sir.
Sam, the charging stations.
There was one more thing I'll add after, after Liz's question.
Are we still, are they still operable 24/7? Because I thought I remember it was, we had said something that they could be turned off during, you know, when people weren't there, like on weekends. And now that school is done, I was thinking, you know, are we, you know, this has been something that people have asked me about, and I don't have an answer for them. So could you tell us a little bit more about what's going on?
Well, we're still trying to determine how we can set a meter on it, so that we determine how much electricity is being used. In the department we talked about, we, we checked it out. We could actually, we could turn them off outside of school hours presently by flipping the switch. But we thought it best that we get, find out how much it's actually costing us, so that we can report that to you, and then we can make an informed decision as to whether to turn them off outside of school hours. There seems to be no reason why we can't do that. There's no indication from the state that we have to provide that electricity to, to those cars that are using it presently, those neighbors that are using it presently.
And the principals report that oftentimes, community members are parking their car at night and leaving them there all day.
Yeah.
So they're taking up a parking space as well as charging overnight. So, you know, that is something that we should see how that is costing us, what that is costing us.
I wonder if the town is doing, because here, the charging facilities and also at the library, they're never turned off. So I'm just curious what the town is, you know.
We could check with John Burke to see what they know.
Liz, and then Dean.
No, I'm just saying that I, I think that, you know, if that's, that's impacting our budget, even if it's a hundred bucks, it's a hundred bucks. I still think it's, you know, something that we really need to, because we had talked about it a while ago, and that's why I'm kind of wondering what the status was.
And my guess is people are just not thinking about the, what that means for the Groton School District in terms of charging and parking their car there. Like, they're just not having a thought. Dean?
Yeah, actually, I was on the council that said, yeah, let's put a charging station here at the library in a third location. And there was a question then about metering and charging. And Mark Offinger at the time, I think, gave us the answer, well, there's an expense in actually figuring all this out. This is essentially a pilot. Because at that time, who was driving electric vehicles, right? Who would drive up and charge? We're way past, that was a million years ago, we're way past the pilot stage. So like, all our stations ought to be, almost, this, someone's got an exemption of some sort. But we're way past the point where we're trying to encourage people to buy electric cars. They're deciding that on their own, and gliding off us is what they're doing.
I, I believe some of the town cars are electric, and that's why they wanted them here. There are, there are the town-
There weren't then, but.
Well, there are now.
Yeah.
We don't have that, though.
I just wanted to add, what are the implications for if there's a property damage on those cars? I don't think we've even thought about that.
That's true.
The insurance?
Yeah.
I'll look into it.
Thank, actually, that's not a bad thing, and I, I don't know if you have to report out, add, to just giving it to Susan, and she can throw it in one of the board notes that we're going to get over the summer, or whenever we find out, in terms of, that's a good question, Andrea. What, what are we doing about metered? And to Dean's point, you know, should, should the town be investing in that? And also, our concern about having people be there on our property and charging overnight, and then leaving them there, taking away space.
Okay, and the last thing that I neglected to report on is the pavilion that we will be erecting at Groton Middle School. I am working with the engineers now to re-engineer the concrete for that, the structure, for that structure. So we're working on that presently. I hope to have an answer for that, and then go out to bid shortly, so that we can get the concrete done. And then we plan on doing the project in, in the early fall, assembling that with my staff.
Super. Bev?
I'm saying, I'd like to go back to the charging stations. Is the town charged on the residents to use their charging stations?
I don't believe so.
Okay, I would just caution the board not to, I mean, the people that are probably using the charging stations are taxpayers. So you don't want to nickel and dime the taxpayers, when they are supporting our budget. So be very careful about nickel and diming, or it's going to cost maybe a hundred dollars. These are the same people that support our budget, pay taxes in the town of Groton. So be very careful with this train of thought.
I agree, Beverly.
So we're saying that it's essentially costless to us, and there's more damage to us politically or otherwise.
You don't, you don't want to put that saying, don't want to be a pound foolish and, I don't know the saying, I forget.
No, I get that, but we're not giving away gasoline and diesel either. I mean, why are we making an exception with those stations? I wasn't comfortable at the time, but hey, there was just three, it was a pilot. Who was going to show up? You know, it was going to be Hensteve, somebody driving around with an electric car. Now they're all a recreation, and I get what you're saying, but I don't think, I don't think that we should be licensing, basically giving people license to come up and basically fill up for free, at the town's expense. The expense of all the other taxpayers. I don't know how much it is. I don't know how much it is. If it's a little, then I don't really care. You're right, I don't want to make a mom out of a molehill. But if it's costing us a lot of money, if we're basically giving away electricity for nothing, with increasing rates, I mean, we ought to know one way or the other.
I think that's what we need to know.
Yeah, point of, point of interest is that it's always the same cars there all the time, too. It's, it looks like it's a neighbor.
I mean, you can have a lot of turnover, it takes hours to, you know, to charge, so.
They're there for a long, they'll, they'll park them overnight or whatever, so it isn't like there are multiple cars using it. It's pretty much the same cars using it all the time, but.
Famous one.
We're working on getting the metering taken care of, and once we can do that, then we can determine how much it costs.
Matthew?
Sam, I read that, I'm not sure it was Stanford, but somewhere in that part of the state, that there was a private vendor who offered to put in meters so that people could pay a fee to be metered. And I'm not sure if that's something that is feasible for us to take a look at. I'm not sure if it's something that could be turned off during school hours, so that employees could benefit from it. I don't want to be directive, it's just a kind of a question.
I think that we need to find out what the town is planning or is doing with the charging, and then we think we need to make our decision post that.
I did talk to Public Works about metering when we first started talking about this subject, and they didn't do it because it wasn't cost-effective to put a meter on there versus what they were actually, what it was costing them in the electricity.
So maybe we could base what their output is, what they, if they've collected information or data around that? Or can, or can they without a meter?
I don't know. I, it, it seems to me that the units that are both, the middle school is different. There, there aren't cars up there like all hours of the night, but Mystic River and Thames River, they are there 24/7. There are cars there, and they're roughly the same cars, a couple of different cars, but they're there all the time.
So maybe we can have a conversation with the, the town, and maybe we can have some, something that kind of goes out to ask them not to be in our parking lot during the school hours. I mean, whatever we find out. I mean, but let's get more information. And to Bev's point, we need to be careful about where we kind of take this and how it's perceived, if it isn't that costly. If we have no further comments, oh wait, did you have one more item that you wanted to?
Oh, that was the pavilion that we're going to be-
That's pavilion, okay. Anything else? Hearing none, let us move on. Committee reports, policy?
Okay, we have three, actually two policies coming to you tonight. Library, the library selection matters, and promotion and graduation.
Curriculum?
Curriculum is not meeting until September.
All right, fine, thank you. Finance and Facilities?
We met on June the 6th. We discussed an electric bus pilot going on in Griswold, the STA. We discussed the Fitch High School LED lighting project, which would be financed through the electric bill, as we understand it, and as Sam mentioned, paid off in about five years. We discussed field use and overuse and the associated maintenance costs with that, and we reviewed the out-of-district tuition rates, that we also discussed at the last COWW.
Any questions for Finance and Facilities? Communications?
This evening, just before this meeting, the Communications Committee approved a draft Groton Public Schools Strategic Communication Plan. We just made a couple of last-minute changes, so we're going to get the proofread printed out to you very soon, and hope that it would be on the agenda for board discussion at our next Cal. I'd like to personally add, I think I'm speaking for the three of us members on the committee, our thanks to Rebecca Bayes, whose work was really critical to getting this done, and not to forget Phil Piazza as well.
Yeah, I believe that that is one of our items for discussion on the committee as a whole already.
So we'll, we'll get that out to you. What was distributed this week is substantively the same, though there are a few changes, and we'll get that out to you as soon as Rebecca can get the changes in and email works.
All right, thank you. Negotiations, we are still in the negotiation process with the pairs, and we have another meeting this coming Thursday. Learn?
Learn always has a breakfast meeting, and it was so nice, because our superintendent came, and she heard the state of the agency reports about each of the schools, Learn Schools, do a report. So it was lovely having Susan there. It's been a long time since one came, so I think Dr. Ginnier came once. Also, then we went into our regular meeting at nine o'clock, and Sarah Moon, who is married to one of our wonderful Groton teachers, Ben Moon, she does a lot with the state and Learn. So she talked about their relationship with the special education, their contract, and all Learn does with the state. And then, let's see, oh yeah, Learn is buying, and I think Waterford just approved it at their RTM meeting, they're going to expand, build a new school, if we get the funding from the state. And they were able to buy the property on Daniel's Avenue in Waterford, which was the old Southwest School, and for a dollar. But then it's going to cost a million dollars to just knock down the building that's there before they could start to build. So it's an expense, but it's, it's something very well-needed, and they need to have additional special ed. And Ocean Avenue Learning Center, that building will, the renovations will be completed in August, and then in September, we'll invite the community, that wonderful synagogue community, to come, also and the neighbors, to have an open house there. It's really beautiful. We also then went into an executive session, and we gave the executive director, Kate Erickson, a salary increase of 2.75% for her outstanding job performance, and extended her contract again for another year, for the three-year contract. And then I'm also going to be serving on the negotiations committee with, for the teachers starting this summer. That's about it.
Certainly know how to have fun. Right, so I think we, I've already reported on the town council, the liaison. Our next meeting, I think, is in October. I think AGSA is also in October. Athletic Fields, has there been, oh, Groton Scholarship?
Doesn't meet till the fall.
Okay. Fields, Jay?
Uh, no meetings.
Okay. Trails?
Matthew was in Boston with his grandson and missed the meeting.
Oh. Library?
That was a good excuse.
Library, the library board met last week. We have two student members of our board, non-voting members, one from Fitch and one from the Marine Magnet School. Both members of the Falcon Robotics, who are busy, busy, busy this summer, doing great stuff and recruiting new members. So that was really nice to hear. There have been some glitches with the OneCard system marrying two different software systems, but Jennifer, the librarian, was saying that she couldn't be happier with the help of Clint and her team. They're actually writing the code to, to make this work. So they were very pleased, and sorry, we're behind schedule, but we're going to get there.
All right. Permanent School Building Committee, I don't think, has met, and the State Council?
No, we meet twice a year, and we met in-
Right.
Okay. All right, so action items, the consent agenda, which is all matters listed under the consent agenda, are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion, with points of clarification will be allowed. I will take a motion for the consent agenda.
Still moved, Liz.
Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
That was Rita. Any, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried. The board would love to thank the City of Groton, who donated the $3,600 to the Groton Public Schools Food Service Department Garden Fresh Bags Program, and then to Pamela Gordonier, who has donated $825 to be used to support the More Than Words program. We are now moving on to Old Business, which is, Liz, would you please be willing to read the motion for number one, please?
Certainly, to approve policy P 6163.1, library material selection as a second reading.
Can I get a second to that, please? Matthew seconds it, can I have discussion? I, Jay?
I think.
Whoever's first?
You were first?
I'm, I don't know whether I'm first or not.
Okay.
We saw you first.
So I know that the board, we're, we're always told that the board does not write or approve regulation. But I do have a question about the regulation. I just wonder if it was overlooked when it was written. But I, I thought we were going to restrict that anyone bringing a request to remove had to be a citizen of Groton to avoid these groups across the country that are just mass petitioning districts. But when I look at the, when I look at the Procedure for Challenge Materials, it says, "The following procedures will be followed when a citizen challenges the appropriateness." And I wonder if it needs to say Groton citizens.
I think it even goes so far to say that it needs to be a parent of a student who goes to Groton. But I will look at that. Thank you for bringing that to my attention, Jay.
Yeah, I don't see that.
Because I think it went even as far as to say it really needed to be someone who is a parent or a guardian of a child in the Groton Public Schools.
And this brings up kind of a, this brings up kind of a general question, and I'm embarrassed that I don't know the answer to this question. When we always say that we're, we're approving the policy, but we present and publish the regulation, it almost probably seems to the general public as though we have vetted and approved the regulations. So when the regulation changes, do we publish that change somewhere?
It, it depends on the policy. Sometimes policies and regulations are kind of put together through cave for us to take a look at. Sometimes there's already a procedure in place, you know, based on another policy, so it just gets tweaked. But you're right, it is kind of the marching orders of how the district staff then actually, you know, puts the policy into action. But I tend to say that it's a good thing for the board to see, just like you're doing right now, Jay, bringing something to our attention, and that's happened before, where it's brought to the attention. And I just go back to the staff who's really putting it in place, to make sure that that's what they meant and intended.
And maybe we can put that on the agenda for some discussion.
Or maybe she can just throw it in the notes and say that she just talked about it, and it was not correction, or it was correct.
And then on policy.
And then, and then you can put it on policy.
Right.
And I, and I'm sorry.
I was just going to mention, of course, this also, the regulation allows then an appeals process through the board or a subcommittee. And then it puts a- And then it puts a five-year limit. So it can't just come back again and again and again from the same person, which I think is a smart move. So, but I was just curious, you know, if administration decided to change the flow of this regulation, you know, how that process works. You know, because, you know, right now, this is, this is published in the official record as though this is the way it's going to be. And I'm not aware of how we, in the past, then changed regulations down the road. I mean, because this references, for example, specific materials and processes for dealing with selection and challenge.
So maybe we need to get some more legal or some advice through CAPE, too, about how to, how to do that. Jay, that's a good point.
All right, thank you.
I'm gonna recognize Dean, and then you, Beverly.
No, I'll yield to Beverly first, it's fine.
Oh, you, Dean has yielded to you, Bev.
Thank you, I just have a quick question. It's not so much about this policy, though, but it is about policy. When we have new policies, how does the staff know that we have a new policy or changed an existing policy? And also, how do parents know? Do we notify parents, do they look on the website that we have a new policy?
So with all policy, we send it out to our entire staff. I typically will work with the principals so that they're very much aware of the policy and the nature behind it, so that they can work. This one really was worked on by our library media specialists, so they're a very important group of staff that probably will meet on this to discuss it if they have any questions. So we publish the new policy on the website as soon as it gets passed. We, there are many, many policies that go through, so to, you know, alert parents of every single new policy. They certainly have the ability to go on and look for policies. And I find that parents typically look for policy if they're faced with a situation that they need the policy on. Or if, if it's something that they're in a situation where we need to share the policy with them. So whether they request it, or we want to share it with them, otherwise it's really there and available and constantly being updated and revised as new policy comes in.
And if I, if I...
Okay, so we don't put it in a newsletter that goes out, do schools have newsletters?
The schools do have newsletters, and I've been sending a quarterly publication out for our parents. So, you know, I'll have to ask the principals if they put policy in newsletters. I don't recall seeing that, but I can ask them.
If I could add just one thing to that, and that is, at our last policy meeting on the 20th of June, we had a rich conversation about how teachers are trained in the new policy. And we maybe want, we may want to look at that again. And that is available, we always video our meetings, so if anybody wants to watch that, well, you would, I have no idea if you wanted to. That rich conversation is on there. And the other thing I wanted to address just for a moment is if you, I know the question about whether you have, you are a resident of Groton, or whether you have a child enrolled in the schools, came up with Jay. And if you look on the request for, it's page five of five, the request for consideration, reconsideration of library materials. And there, the first thing is that you must be a resident of Groton. And the second thing is, if you're not a resident, or you do not have a student currently enrolled in Groton Public Schools, the challenge will not be reviewed.
So where are you on page three of five?
Five of five.
Oh, five of five.
Yep.
Okay.
But that's there.
Okay. I knew I had read it somewhere.
Dean?
So I voted against this the last time, I'm going to do so again, and here's my concern. What's in school libraries has been kicked around for decades, if not a century. I remember when I was a kid, there were publications, there were books that were considered controversial. There's always, no shortage of people who think that somebody else's book is controversial. I'm a book person, I have thousands of my own. My father wasn't publishing, I am not one of those people. This has come up, if I can provide some context, because in very recent years, people have found materials, and there's kids' school libraries, that are, at least by old-fashioned standards, rather objectionable. Primarily, it has to do with sexual matters. Sometimes it has to do with what people consider to be distortions of history. I actually, and I can't remember where I found this, I actually was able to find a copy of Mein Kampf, the book that everybody was talking about in history, and I thought, well, I should read it to find out what the clown had to say. Minimally enlightening, but I could say, yes, I read the stupid thing, but it was available. I did not expect to find Hustler magazine in the library, and never, and I didn't. So there are controversies, controversies that are, that have arisen relatively recently. I have no doubt that there is a group, or there were small groups of people, who are being gadflies, troublemakers, flat-earthers. I really couldn't care less. That, however, is just the cover. There is, I think, and I haven't looked at our libraries, but I did see one book in the high school library that I know has, at least part of it, there's an image of fellatio. So you would not have found that in my library, but hey, I come from another time, I suppose. There has been, in other schools anyway, much more objectionable material found. That is the real genesis. And I know that for one reason or another, our institutions, like the American Library Association and its affiliates, people who are following those guidelines, are circling the wagons, making sure that there's a response to keep the troublemakers out of the libraries, to make sure the kids get access to what are considered heterodox materials, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, all good cover. The fact remains that there are materials, and I don't know whether there are libraries, but there are materials that have been found in other school districts that are frankly objectionable. Maybe not everybody finds them objectionable. I'd rather not have elementary school kids find certain books in their library. And it is not a banning of books to say it belongs in the high school library as opposed to the elementary school library, et cetera, et cetera. There's a lot of hyperbolic language that's being used, more than one side. Not very enlightening, more heat than light. But I see, when I saw this policy come through, I know we had an existing policy, it's been modified. I'm thinking, this is an effort to choke that off, because the barbarians are seen as at the gate. I remember the, the woman that was here, forgive me if I don't remember her name, but she was the librarian, I'm gonna call her a librarian, I know there's another word for it these days, at the middle school, and she seemed very emotionally shaken up by it. I'm sort of curious to know if our district has had people challenge books, what those challenges were, what the materials were challenged, who was doing the challenging. So I don't think that this is, this is not in a vacuum. It may be in a vacuum now, maybe a hypothetical for Groton now, maybe there's nothing truly objectionable on our shelves. But I think we can agree that there are materials that are objectionable. We'd rather not have the kids exposed to certain topics while they're in school at tender, young ages, et cetera, et cetera. That's a judgment call. Again, when I was in school, Huckleberry Finn was on the, was on the chopping block because every other page had, had a racial slur on it. So, but I'm gonna vote no against this thing because I see this as a reaction to what is a legitimate concern on the part of people as they discover what's in their kids' libraries. And frankly, if there's something objectionable in our libraries, I want the ability for at least the parents to be able to make a, you know, a reasonable challenge. Because what's going to happen is, if the parents can't trust us, they're gonna pull their kids out. They're gonna pull their kids out. And homeschooling used to be quite a fringe thing, it's less and less. I know of people who've moved from other countries to this country, because the same thing is happening in a lot of other countries, but this country at least allows homeschooling.
He's got it right. Sorry, I'm allowing, I want you to have your free speak, your free time.
I'm, I'm, I'm over, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to rant, but I mean, that's kind of the context. It's why I'm gonna vote against this thing, because if it's nothing else, it's a gesture to say there's something else going on here.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your voice.
I just wanted to, to assure Dean that I respect your point of view. But I also wanted to assure everyone that the, that the library decisions are based on the thinking of the, the school librarian's Bill of Rights, the Freedom of to Read Statement, the American Association of School Librarians, and the State Department of Education. And furthermore, there is a legitimate process for legitimately objecting to material and having your voice heard. So, those things are...
I'm gonna recognize Jay.
Yes, so I, I do realize now, looking at the last page, that Dr. Ackerman, as usual, is correct, that the wording is there, I just wonder if it shouldn't be reflected in, in the regulation so that you don't get someone who's objecting to the form not following the regulation. And I also note that this then can come to the board, you know, as an appeal. And so I see this as being a full process, will allow, allow the board to fully discuss any, any appeals that come about. Dean said, I'd be very interested to know how many of these we've had. So I don't know if, perhaps Susan could have someone come up with a report, how many removal requests we've had and how they've turned out. Also, as a side note, Susan mentioned the policy online. It's so much better than the old paper books. You just put the key word in, and you can search our policies in an instant and see everything that...
And it's highlighted. And I'd like to add, Jay, one of the questions was, how do our families know? I think, Beverly, you had asked. We also publish a handbook at the elementary, middle school, and high school. And all of the major policies that affect students in school are listed there. And, and the policies refer to, but it's kind of given like a paragraph version that's very easy to understand the essence of it, but then it refers to the actual policy. So we have all of that language in our handbooks. And it's reviewed with our kids, especially the older kids. It's reviewed probably in the classroom for elementary and elementary language, for kids to understand kind of what are our rules in schools. And for the middle school and high school, it's more clearly laid out. So thank you, Beverly, for that question, but it just jogged my mind when Jay was talking about it, that we do have handbooks that do specify policy.
Any further question? Hearing none, all those in favor to approve the policy P 6163.1, library material selection, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? This motion has carried. Dean, would you please read number two, please?
You trying to make me feel better? I move to approve policy P 5123, promotion, retention, graduation as a second reading.
Can I have a second to that, please?
I'll second it.
That's Rita. Discussion?
I have a discussion. And that is, if you will look on the first page of the policy in the second paragraph, you'll see that prior to the end of the school year, any deviation from progress mentioned in the first paragraph will be agreed upon by the teacher, parent, and principal. And that is for all grades. But then, if you turn the page and you go to the, again, the regulation, which really isn't our, our area, but if you look at it, the first, the elementary, pardon me, school says the teacher and the principal only. If you go to the middle school, it's the, the parent and the teacher and the administrator.
Yeah, we do need to add parent in there. That just must have been, if this was the old policy, so when we reviewed...
This is the one I got.
This is the old regulation, so it just wasn't updated with the policy.
I see.
Yeah.
And there's also a spelling error somewhere. And I think it may have been on the other one, rego, it's regarding instead of regarding. So I'll, I'll give you that, thank you.
So we just have some omitted, omitted and misspelling. Any other discussion? Liz?
I still, I understand the curriculum committee is, is going to be discussing about increasing the social studies credit. And I understand that there's a lot of ramifications. But I still would like to know, if we decide as a curric, the curriculum committee to support increasing that number of credits, what would be the process? Do we have to then go and open this policy up again? Is that what happens?
Yep, just for the change. Yep.
Okay.
Which is not a, not a bad thing. To grow and to expand. That's the whole reason why the revision needs to have happened.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve, the motion to approve the policy P 5123, promotion, retention, graduation, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion has carried. Rita, could you please read number, under new business, number C1?
Yes, thank you. The motion is to approve policy P 6146.1, examination grading as a first reading. Can I have a second? I've got Matthew. All right, can we have discussion?
The only, the only thing is that we, we really struggled with the...
Language.
The last, the wording of the last paragraph.
Yeah.
And if it weren't for Denise Doolittle, I think we'd still be there.
She was very helpful.
Yes.
Do, do, do people, since we don't have people who might be watching this, can you just do a quick, a, a quick overview about what this examination and grading means?
I'm gonna ask Susan to do it.
Right, so really, in this policy, we were looking at performance and instruction and how the process works for evaluating a student's performance. There were certain things really in the old policy that no longer occur. Like they had, they weren't considering the next generation science. So everything in green you can see was added to the policy, including the students in 11th grade taking SAT as required by the state Board of Ed. So really, the reason that we came back to this policy was that we had older assessments in here, and we needed to update it. But when we got into the policy, you see the red line under statewide and district-wide assessments. We, the language was really impacting us because it really was talking about requirements of state and federal law regarding provisions for special education. So that's why Denise was very helpful, you know, and, and those provisions related to services to students with disability. So that the board directs the Director of Special Education or designee in accordance with the state and federal law to develop procedures that indicate how district staff shall determine whether a student with a disability who is eligible for special education and related services under IDEA shall participate in alternative assessments. So we have something called an alternative assessment that the state provides, but it really is a student who is really impacted and cannot take the normal state assessments. So there's a whole procedure that the state provides for us, you know, in determining eligibility for this alternative assessment. So that's why it was complicated, and we kept rolling around with the other written language, and it wasn't making sense.
I think Rita has a question.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
I do have a question. I'm, I'm thinking more of a child and the parents, and to lead it up to one person, the board directs the Director of Special Education in accordance with, you know, to make this decision, I feel that it should go up to and continue on to the superintendent, not just be one, one person or that person's designee.
But that's just to, to develop procedures that would indicate...
Right.
But it's just developing procedures.
But it's just developing procedures.
And they're based on federal and state law, so we don't get to select the procedures out of our own, you know, accord. They really are specified in the state on who is able to be eligible for this alternative assessment.
But Rita, you... But you're making a decision that maybe a parent would want that child to have an alternative assessment, so it's, you're like hindering them in a way.
But they would have to meet the requirements by the state, so the child would have to meet the requirements in order to take this assessment.
I understand.
That it can't be just a parent wish, it can't be my wish, it can't even be the Director of Special Ed's wish, it would have to really follow these procedures that the state has outlined.
Rita, could you put your thinking into writing?
Well, it's just that I want, you know, sometimes, you know, a child and a parent of a child that has special needs, they're thwarted, they have a hard time, you know, and lots of times they'll take an advocate with them to a PPT meeting. I just wanna make sure that it's not, that our parents feel that they can, you know, that they're not gonna be... I know when our oldest child was in first and second grade, and kindergarten for that matter, I knew that he had a fine motor problem, and the school kept saying, no, 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 he'll outgrow it, he'll outgrow it, and I said, no, he's not gonna grow it, this has been the case since he was young. So we took him to Easter Seals and had the assessment done, and then right after that, they said, oh, yes, of course. But, you know, I just wanna make sure that a parent of a special education child, you know, can get the testing they need.
And this is just the first reading, so if you could get to me...
Yeah.
Something that you would like us to put on...
Well, I'm not sure exactly how to... So I just wanna make sure you understand, this isn't about other assessments, this is just for the state mandated once-a-year test. So in other words, instead of taking an ESPEC test, if a child has significant special needs, they would take what they call this alternative assessment, which is...
Right, and sometimes they're read to them and...
Right, right, right.
All different.
But this is just, okay.
These are just procedures, then?
No, this is the policy.
No, but it is speaking to procedures.
Okay.
Right.
Procedures on how students are eligible for that.
So I hear Andrea requesting from Rita that if you would like to kind of, like, just send, jot some notes down to Andrea, then during their policy committee, they can, they can take a look at what your concern is. Is there any other concerns?
I don't think so. And it may well be that just another reading will answer those questions for you.
And we can have Denise come too, to listen. We can ask Denise to come too.
Yes.
I'm glad you asked the question, Rita. I'm looking forward to seeing your reasoning so we can consider it.
Yeah, what? I couldn't...
I'm looking forward to seeing your reasoning so we can consider it.
Okay.
Okay. Hearing none. Further discussion? All those in favor to approve the policy P 6146 dot one, examination slash grading as a first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Abstain?
I'll abstain right now.
Rita is abstaining. The motion has passed.
Curiously.
All right. Matthew, would you please be willing to be the motion for number C2?
I move that we approve the out-of-district tuition rates for the 2023-2024 school year as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second to that?
Second. Liz?
All right. So any further discussion? We've had a couple committee the whole, it has been vetted through the finance and facilities, and it was also presented to us through our business manager. Is there further questions about this? No. Hearing none. All those in favor to approve the out-of-district... Woo! Let me try that sentence one more time.
Out of the...
All those in favor to approve the out-of-district tuition rates for the 2023-2024 school year, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Abstain? That motion has carried. Thank you, guys. Matthew, do you have letters of communication?
No.
Andrea?
I do. First of all, I wanted to just recognize Silvana Fanucci and Rob Fanucci, who worked as teachers in the school where I was principal, and they retired. But the ones that really amazed me were Lisa Nabok, who I knew as Lisa Walk in the eighth grade, I never realized it was Lisa, and Celeste Duffy, who was Celestio when I had her in the eighth grade as well. And then, I had, I received today from Jason Filardi, I don't know if you remember Jason, I had him in the eighth grade, but at any rate, he's a screenwriter now, his latest work was Chapel White, Chapel White, which was on, you had to go into, I don't even know what to call it, but you had to get it on your computer. But the ones that came before that were Bringing Down the House and Seventeen Again. And Jason was just a fabulous student in eighth grade, a lot of fire in his personality. But he sent me a video that his wife did of them going with a group, and I don't know what the humanitarian group was, but they took air conditioning and computers to a school in the Philippines. And to watch Jason and his wife and the other individuals be welcomed by the children and to be brought into their culture, and then to see the joy on Jason and his community's face, it was just the most joyful thing I've ever seen. So I want the schools, Groton Public Schools, to know what a wonderful job they did, you know, just the idea of humanitarianism in bringing up our students.
It's nice to hear about the, for us to hear from you, the historical knowledge of how some of the students that have been educated in Groton Public Schools, it's nice to know. Thank you.
Bev, do you have anything? Jay?
I have no communications, but I did have the pleasure of attending the Juneteenth celebration at Groton Town Hall last week.
Cool.
The first one, I believe.
Liz?
I went to the retirement ceremony, which was really good, a lot of fun with Silvana and Rob and all kinds of people there that I saw, and it was really special. I just think we need to look at, as a board, as a district, why all teachers aren't there. I remember when I retired, there were like ten teachers that retired and only two of us showed up. And I would like to know, you know, I remember years ago in 2000, when I first joined the staffs, now, they used to have a dinner, and people were able, and it was at Fitch. At that time, of course, Fitch was the biggest cafeteria, and there was dining room and, you know, white-litened tablecloths, and it was a nice dinner. And, you know, it's like, people are here for 30 years or more. I wasn't, I was in different other places, but, and what do we give them for that recognition? And I understand there's a budgetary amount to that, but what other profession do we get where somebody gives their life for 30 years and they get really nothing? And I think that's really sad, because we're not validating their achievement. Let's face it, to be a teacher is hard. It's not easy. And I just think we need to lead that charge and really acknowledge the hard work in a more appropriate way. I thought this year's was a much better ceremony, don't let me go on. It was more improved.
Well, I think that more people came out, that was really good news.
Yeah, but I just think it was still like...
Thank you. I've written it down.
Thank you.
And you do know that each of the schools, school communities do offer a nice retirement dinner for everybody?
Oh, yes.
And that other people are invited? So I can make sure that next year, that when we get them, they kind of come in bits and pieces, but I get them put on my calendar, so if I can go, and this year, they kind of conflicted with several other meetings that I had with you all. So I think if we can get them ahead of time and you know about them, because that's where you do see that kind of festivity, and the nice dinner, and it's done by the colleagues, and they get a nice gift, but I'll make sure you all get that invitation too.
So maybe that needs to be, maybe that's just a conversation that we have with the teachers' union about whether they would like to see that done differently as well?
Yeah.
Dean?
Went to the graduation. I know a lot of us did. And I shook I don't know how many hands, just like last year, and I still didn't get COVID.
Yay.
All right. Rita, I washed my nectar.
A lot. Yes. I attended both the middle school graduation with Matthew and the high school graduation, and it was a wonderful celebration, both of them, and it was so great to see the community, the parents, and, you know, and the students cheering each other on. I really enjoyed the speakers at graduation also, but I have a suggestion for next year. It would be to invite a former Fitch student back to speak at graduation. We used to have a keynote speaker, someone from the community, sometimes it was, you know, actually Richard Blumenthal, or, you know, one of our state senators would come and speak. They've sort of done away with that, but I really feel that if we could invite back one of our students, that whether they had military success or, you know, went on to higher education, whatever it is, you know, I think that would be wonderful for the students to see.
I have to say, Rita, when I was the principal at Fitch Middle, we brought a senior back to, and that was so successful.
Oh, that would be wonderful for the middle school.
That's a great idea.
And I also would like to mention that our, the high school principal is retiring, for those in the community that doesn't, that don't know.
He didn't retire.
He did retire.
I mean, I mean, he's not retiring, he's relocating.
That's right.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I meant, I didn't mean retiring, it was just, we were talking about that, sorry. No, he's just moving on to a different district. And we'll be doing a search for a, not only a business manager, but a high school principal.
It's gonna be a busy summer.
It'll be a busy summer, yeah.
Bev, in case you were, do you have anything that you would like to add?
No. No, thank you.
Right. And I attended the high school graduation, and if, if the students and the student speeches that we heard, if they are what we are producing, the world is gonna be okay. They were very inspiring and very moving, just really very moving. And so just to take a look at our calendar, we, I'm hoping, I'm not hoping, July 10th, which would be our first committee of the whole, I got you, Bev, in one second, we're gonna have a remote meeting for the board's self-avow, and I do apologize, I heard back from one person that I think I didn't send everything over into Word documents, so I am going to do my letter once again, and this time, make it correct. So I will do that. July 17th is our one and only committee of the whole, followed on the 24th by a regular meeting. Bev?
Thank you, Kim.
Absolutely.
I did have one communication about how to get more teachers involved with the PTOs. And I'll leave that to you, Susan.
I think I'll share that with our new communications committee, they're so talented with their draft plan, but you're right, I would love to see even more, we don't have a PTO at the high school, I know that parents get very busy and so do kids, and we basically have booster clubs, so in the sports and clubs, but I would love to see, we have a very, very active PTO with Groton Middle School, so maybe some of those parents who are moving on to the high school might be able to start that. But I agree, I think the more, the merrier.
Do we have agenda topics that we would like to add? I think I'm also gonna make sure that you guys, we have, you guys had the current newest, improved...
Template.
Template, it's been tweaked again so that you guys kind of know what's gonna be happening throughout the...
The last one was ended June 20th or something.
So just make sure that you have that.
My standing data request.
Uh huh.
My standing data request.
Yeah. Yeah, it's happening, it's happening.
I love it.
All right. We gotta get the data first before we can...
Gotta get the data.
We gotta get the data. All right. Motion to adjourn? Can I have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, Rita. All right.